Am I ready?
You may begin.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order our July 13, 2020 Board of Education meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
This is a roll call.
Director Anhalt.
You're on mute, Gary.
We'll come back to Gary. Director Borchadeen.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Merschrock.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
And Humble's.
Aye. Next, we'll turn to the Superintendent Bush for her report.
Good evening.
Superintendent Bush.
Yes, good evening. Thank you very much. And I'll just have a couple of updates tonight. It's been a little while since we've had a superintendent report, but glad we could provide one this evening for some events coming this week. We have scheduled some anti-racism virtual town hall sessions for the emphasis of really listening to our community and our continued emphasis on equity, especially serving our people of color in our community that are supporting our children. So this is an opportunity for both students and community members and staff members to discuss the supportive efforts we have towards anti-racism as a school district, as well as areas where they believe we need to improve. So it is truly an opportunity to speak out and for leadership within the district to listen. So I encourage folks to attend and to know that it's in this kind of format, in a virtual format. And we have registrations still available. You can find those linked on our website. There are student town halls that are for student-only sessions. Those are this coming week, July 15, from 2 o'clock to 3:30; July 15, from 6 o'clock to 7:30; and July 16, from 2 o'clock to 3:30. Our community town halls are July 14. Tomorrow evening is the first one, 6 o'clock to 7 p.m. July 16, 11:30 a.m. to 12:30 over the noon hour, and then finally July 16, from 6 p.m. to 7 p.m. The sessions, just due to the size of our Zoom capacity, are at 80 participants. However, if we should have an increased population size, we would gladly open up more virtual sessions. So please do sign up, and we look forward to hearing those voices and listening. In addition to that, we also have had our summer sports underway this summer. I just want to give a public thank you to our athletic directors, our coaches, our families, our athletes, who have been navigating and probably testing the waters for us under the pandemic as they've navigated summer sports. As you know, summer sports were allowed to be open under the governor's proclamation in late May. And I just couldn't be more proud of our district for having high standards for safety and the health of our community and athletes taking measures that have kept folks healthy and also taken measures to keep keeping people engaged. And so it has truly been a learning process, and our athletic directors have definitely been charging forward, and we're learning from them. And as we learn each day brings new information and and new experiences. And so certainly the summer sports has been a good learning experience for all of us, but just also just the hard, hard work that has gone in to make that happen. So just wanted to say thank you for all those who made that happen for students this summer and truly learning by doing. And so we've learned a lot. That will influence even some of our future decision-making around opening school, returning to learn plans, online learning even. So it has been really a pleasure and and a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, that's for sure. So thanks to that department and for all the athletes and their families for their support. And we also will have tonight our update on our return to learn plan. That is the major topic for this evening. And so just to recognize, there's so much anxiety around this, and we have opportunities this coming week for input from our staff, input from our community. And again, we are still in drafting mode, and every day this plan is flexible. We are at a starting place, but we really want to gather more input as we move forward, and so that will be part of the topic of discussion tonight. So thank you very much, and that's all I have for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent Bush, and I encourage board members, if you have an opportunity, to sit into some of the community, the virtual meetings, to please do so. But we got to make sure that we also have seats for other folks. So I believe you can check with Laurel to see who the various times to get registered. Next, do we have any board reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to communications, delegations, and petitions. We'll invite our public speakers to address the board. I'd like to remind those who have requested to address the board to please state your name and address for the record when called. You will be given up to five minutes for your remarks, and Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and inform you when your time is up. Additionally, in order to abide by the open meeting laws, I'd like to remind our speakers that there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of the questions or comments from the individual speaking. Laurel, will you call our first speaker?
I'm happy to do so. So we have five guests who are pre-registered with us, and first on our docket this evening will be Mr. Ron Corbett.
Good evening, Board. My name is Ron Corbett. I'm representing the Economic Alliance this evening, and we're located at 501 First Street Southeast. I appreciate the board's attention this evening, along with superintendent and the staff. What we're here to present this evening is our community spirit campaign in Lynn County. As you know, our our community has been hit economically because of the COVID-19 virus. But it's not the first time that we've experienced difficult economic times. Just think back to 2008 during the flood and the impact that that had on businesses, people, and the community. And then those of you that have very long memories or have been around the community who remember back in the mid-'80s when we went through some very challenging times when we had businesses like Iowa Manufacturing, the Packing Plant, Harnish Vega, all leaving our community. But in each one of these challenging times, we were able to rally and improve our community. So it was with that theme that we've launched our Rally Community Spirit campaign. We call it the Rally CAP, and the CAP stands for Champion and Protect. Unlike past economic challenges where we were able to put our foot on the gas and go 100% offense, we're not able to do that because we obviously want to champion the business community, but we also have to make sure that people are protected. And that's one of the challenges that you're certainly familiar with. You want to go full speed this fall to educate the kids, but you also have to take into consideration their protection. So you have to have a balanced approach between champion and protecting. Our goal really is to try and influence as much of the spending locally that we can. So we know that people have a purchasing power, and when they purchase from outside of our community, you don't have the same economic impact as if you would when you're purchasing local. And as you know, it's really important to have a strong tax base, not only just to support the schools, but also other local governments, counties, and cities. So having a strong business community providing that tax base, along with the jobs that those businesses create, those are the children of the people that work at the businesses. So our rally campaign, Champion and Protect, is simple. It's only trying to influence people to buy as much local as they possibly can. So we currently have over 100 businesses that have signed up, and we try to make this fun. So as you participate in each business that's participating, every time you make a purchase, you get a card, and those cards can be turned in for swag. People like to wear hats and t-shirts, anything that shows their community pride and community spirit for a school or a community. And it's within that vein that we're working to build this community spirit and pride so we can recover and champion our local businesses. So we just wanted to inform you tonight of what we've been doing for the last month on this effort, and we're going to continue to champion and also protect our community going forward. And we appreciate the role that the Cedar Rapids School District plays in our overall economic health and why we wanted to speak with you this evening. So thank you very much for your time.
And thank you very much for sharing that information with us.
Our next speaker this evening will be Karen Swanson and Chris Tyler from the Cedar Rapids School Foundation.
I think that's Chris Tyler, and I think he's muted.
Okay, so Chris, could you? There you go.
So I was just saying, this is my first 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 role as board chair in updating the school board on our progress, and I start by muting myself. So we're off to a great start here. Talking points for for kind of update the school board on the foundation activities. We've been assisting the assisting the district directly since the shutdown began. Many of you probably saw the yard science for every senior in the district. We were behind that. And our executive director, Karen Swanson, wrote a COVID emergency fund grant to the greater community, Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation, and we were awarded the full ask of $24,000 to pay for data costs associated with distance learning. We are continuing our efforts in preparation for the return to learn for the school district. One of those aspects may involve recording with our purchasing department on the possibility of a face mask, kind of a financial support and and or a PTA Booster Club fundraiser for logoed masks for each of the respective schools in the district. We closed our fiscal year 2020 on June 30, and despite significant investment losses, like everyone else, we still hope to end the year in the black. We anticipate our fundraising options, opportunities declining and are stopping like most other nonprofits. So we're still working on alternative fundraising streams and in doing so, trying to still support what the district needs from us. We'll be undertaking a new three-year strategic plan coming this fall, which will coordinate with mission-driven work with Superintendent Bush. We completed our 2018 to 2020 plan successfully and look forward to having another three-year run at this coming up soon. So that is all I have to offer from as far as an update from the foundation board. Thank you for the opportunity to talk and appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you for your continued support. We truly appreciate it. Laurel.
Our next speaker, who is pre-registered, is Rama. I'm going to probably mess the last name up. Is it Elshik? Rama, are you with us? Remember to unmute yourself.
So I'd first like to extend my thank yous to Mr. Tominski and Ms. Bush, as well as entirety of the board on this platform today. It's no secret that Black people are systemically oppressed in the criminal justice system and healthcare, but arguably most importantly, in education. And the CRCSD is not immune to this, nor has it been thus far, I'd like to say, completely supportive of its Black students. There are various instances where either I or another Black student has blatantly experienced racial discrimination in the halls of your schools. And within that, there have been even more students that have come forward to express their discontent at the sheer disregard for their lives. Yet these students, I'd say not surprisingly, are met with statements that question their morality and phrases that gaslight their experiences as people of color, as well as the distinct lack of action to combat these students and to help alleviate the burden of the daily racism they already experience. At this point, I've sort of come to accept the fact that the oppressed might always have to teach the oppressors, and I'm more than okay to teach people history that they wouldn't otherwise know about. But what's most disheartening, and I think that word doesn't even do it justice, but what is, is the fact that Black students are not met with the same support as is the effort as is the effort they put into their events, organizations, and school performances. And those that do are simply tokenized. And so it begs the question of whether or not the district and the individual schools really care about their students of color, specifically Black students. So after reviewing nondiscrimination policy number 102, Rafa and I have drafted some demands, or rather negotiations, in which we hope to finalize together in conjunction with the board and have all staff admins and maybe even students sign agreeance. At the top of this is inclusion. One of the things we hope to have is a therapist of color available to all students. It doesn't have to be individually at every school, but just a district-wide therapist of color. We'd also like to have an anonymous survey open to students where they can submit their experiences until they fully feel comfortable coming forward. We'd like these surveys to be reviewed once a month with a panel of students and staff. And then necessary changes can be made to the school's environment. We also want active recruitment of Black people and people of color for new positions. We've come to realize that there are a lot of open positions, but most of these candidates seem to be white. And we already know that the district has a plan and place for this. But we want the district to be like assisting individual building principals to like meet their goals of hiring practices set forth by the Diversity and Inclusion Plan. We also want pertaining to Black History Month, we want the district to make a distinct acknowledgement of this month, spreading awareness each day. We also want each school to have a Black History Month Assembly in every grade level, elementary and above. And I will be more than happy to help coordinate that. We also want the district to realize that not only should it celebrate its Black students during February, but the entirety of the school year. We want all high schools to have a Black Student Union available to all students of color, as well as Black students. In relation to sport teams, we want there to be a more strict disciplinary action against students who use racial slurs, specifically the N-word, which has been widely known and used in these sport teams. We also want the district to have an annual multicultural fair to celebrate students' backgrounds beyond just different food from different regions. And we'd also like the district to reach out to different groups, such as BSU and ELL, to better this celebration. We'd also like an active promotion of students of color and advanced classes and AEP, as well as in their community. Because we know that in these different, various classes, there's only a minute amount of Black or people of color. So that's all I have time to cover right now. So I think I'll just let Rafa do the rest. I just, again, like to thank the board for allowing me to have this time. And again, I'll be happy to help with any of coordinating, any of these new things we'd like to have the board participate in. And yeah, that's all I have.
And Rama, we would like to thank you for presenting to the board. And we have the administration that are on this Zoom call. And someone will get back to you. So I appreciate your comments.
Next up for our public speaking this evening is Rafa Elshihik. Rafa?
Elshik, hi. So again, I'd like to thank everybody for allowing Rama and I to have this platform. But I'm just going to continue on our demands list. Next, we have the Zero tolerance. We'd like to rename schools that commemorate slave owners and blatant racists, such schools as, but not limited to, Jackson, Washington, and Jefferson. We'd like all teachers, district-wide, to take the Harvard and IDI bias tests. And these tests must occur at least twice a year, and training must be repeated at least monthly. We'd also like students to take the Harvard and IDI bias tests. And training sessions for students based on these tests can occur during homeroom, warrior time, or any other time during school. Next, we have discipline. We'd like to end our contract and partnership with the ZIRPD and take out SROs from all schools. Then we'd like to have an increase in transparency. Each school must properly document cases of discrimination and racism. Each school must properly document reasonings for sending students to a school such as Metro suspension or expelling. Each school must properly document its approach to disciplining teachers, including, but not limited to, the reason why, the actions taken as a result, and the outcome. And we also ask if this aligns with the confidentiality clauses for these to be made public. And then we have the curriculum. First, our history classes. Acknowledgement of Black people must occur in every unit of U.S. history and world history and must be in depth. Curriculum outline must be made public. Teachers who neglect to teach Black history beyond slavery must be held accountable. And creation of system to address these discrepancies is necessary. Our world history classes must acknowledge that Black history does not begin as slavery. The curriculum must strive to project a positive and factually correct Black narrative, not victimization or demonization one. Thus, discussions surrounding communities of color must occur at least once a month. Literature that must be taught in all history classes, even if just an excerpt, are things such as "What to a Slave is the Fourth of July" and "The New Jim Crow." We'd also like to ask for a partnership with students to lobby at the state level to allow African-American history to be a full credit rather than an elective. Then we have our LA 9 and LA 10 classes. Some literature that must be acknowledged and taught, among others, are "Between the World and Me" and "Native Son." We'd also like to ask that during Black history, there must be a unit dedicated to commemorating Black literature. We'd also like to ask for active promotion of African-American humanities and African-American history in all high schools and to all students, not just those of color. Then we'd like to address the board. First, active publicizing of meetings open to the public, especially to the classes that are densely populated with people of color. Then we'd like to normalize having a student see at board meetings. Finally, board meetings and agendas, we ask to be made public. Finally, the least the CRCSD can do is release a statement to all families and students saying that the CRCSD supports Black Lives and the Black Lives Movement. We cannot dance around the issue. And if you really care about your students, including your Black students, then you'd say it as it is. Black Lives Matter. If you fail to release a statement, then Black students will continue to believe that they are not supported by their own school district. You will fail to provide us with the support net. You'll fail at giving us hope in our district. And thus, you will fail to ensure that all your students are future-ready. Thank you. That is all I have for you.
Thank you so much, Rafa. And someone from our district will be contacting you and Rama. And we appreciate the presentation today. So you will be hearing from the district. Thank you so much.
Our last speaker this evening is Kelly McMahon. Kelly, remember to unmute yourself.
Thank you, members of the Cedar Rapids Board of Directors, for your time today. My name is Kelly McMahon, and I reside at 5508 Dossel Drive Southwest, Cedar Rapids, Iowa 52404. I'm speaking as an individual today about the process for developing our district's Return to Learn plans. I want to begin by saying I do not envy anyone that has been tasked with the development of design Return to Learn plans for the 2020-21 school year. I know that it's a very challenging task with so many tiny details that have to be considered to ensure we are providing the safest and healthiest learning and work environments for students and staff. Marzano's Reliable Schools Research tells us that in order to develop the best plans, we need to have an inclusive decision-making process that involves all stakeholders with an intentional focus on equity. Unfortunately, the Cedar Rapids Community School District failed to implement an inclusive decision-making model that intentionally focused on equity of access when developing the Return to Learn plans. At the June 8th Board of Directors meeting, administration was asked, how would the district ensure equity of opportunity for parents to complete the parent survey for the Return to Learn plans? Yet, when the survey was emailed to parents on June 23rd at 11:55 a.m., a plan did not exist to ensure that parents without access to email, internet, or devices, as well as parents with limited English skills that are not literate in their home language, would be able to complete the survey. Due to these types of barriers, nearly 50% of the parents at my school were not provided an equitable opportunity to access the survey. Both my principal and I were told that the team would meet the afternoon of June 23rd to discuss how to address these concerns. When I followed up to find out what the plan was and involved using more electronic forms of communication and electronic translations. The district is also limiting parent involvement in the town hall to 240 individuals. Again, these town halls are only being advertised electronically. Equity of opportunity to hear from parents was not a factor in the communication plan in engaging this critical stakeholder group. As a building, we have to be intentional about making equity of access a part of our plans prior to administering any surveys for our parents. I would expect the same from the district. Des Moines Public Schools implemented a collaborative inclusive decision-making model intentionally focused on equity from the very beginning of developing their Return to Learn plans. To ensure equity of access to providing input for parents, Des Moines had their staff assist parents with completing the survey over the phone. So parents without access to email, internet, or device would have an equitable opportunity to complete the survey. They also utilized interpreters to complete the survey over the phone with non-English or limited English-speaking parents. They completed this work in early June. I am thankful that my union, the Cedar Rapids Education Association, conducted a survey in June to provide my fellow members the opportunity to share our thoughts, questions, and concerns regarding returning to school for the 2021 school year. At the time I am writing these comments, as well as time this board meeting, I have yet to receive a survey from the district to ask for my feedback. And the proposed plan on the website... Sorry. The district has yet to send me a survey to ask for my feedback. And the proposed plan on the website sends a mixed message pertaining to whether PPE and social distancing will be required, which my fellow members and I overwhelmingly said we need in order to feel safe to return to school. I want to go back to school. I do not want to teach kindergarten virtually. I don't know how the district created these plans without, sorry, doggies, without having building-level administrators and teachers at the design table from the very beginning. Like Des Moines, we are experts on the complexities of our school buildings as we are entrenched in making decisions about how to operate on a daily basis. Our buildings shouldn't be held to a different standard of inclusive decision-making than the district. Thank you for your time.
And thank you, Kelly. Thank you for sharing that information. And I'm sure that someone from our district will be getting back to you. So thank you for your comments. Next, was that the last one, Laurel? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that board members would like to pull for a comment, question, or a separate vote?
President Humble, I'd like to pull item 21-013 from the consent agenda for separate consideration due to an existing conflict of interest.
What was that again? Jen?
I'd like to pull item 21-013 from the consent agenda due to a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Humbles?
Yes.
I would also, for the same reason, like to pull item number 21-009, Personnel Report, for a separate vote.
Thank you, Director Mersbrach. Anything else?
President Humbles, I would like to pull item number BA 21-011-01, Policy Manual Review Revision and... Review and Revision 102C for a comment.
Okay, thank you. Director Borchardine? So Laurel, how do we move forward with this? We'll vote on...
I would suggest that you take the item, the Policy Manual Review, that there's a comment before we take the vote for the consent agenda. This is two items that have been requested to be voted on separately.
I'm sorry, you faded in and out. So first, we need to...
I would take the item that Jennifer Borchardine had...
Okay.
...that they gave a comment about with regards to the consent agenda.
Director Borchardine, would you like to make a comment on the one that you wanted to pull, please?
Yes, I would like to make a comment. This is in relation to Title IX, some procedures and policies and retaliation. It has to do with the retaliation section of that policy, which ends just saying that retaliation is prohibited. But I don't think that... I think that we need to be a little more prescriptive in that language because if people are using this as a manual for reference, if they're using it as a guide, I think that it would be helpful to have at the end of that statement on page 62 to say, "The district will appropriately investigate and respond to any allegation of retaliatory conduct consistent with this procedure." I believe without having a qualifier there, it's kind of empty language.
And I would just say that we have a vote. We could consult with this this evening and that was shared with them. And we have added a launch... We ended that retaliation Russian one point C.
So Laurel, because you're fading it out. So you said that has been added?
Yes, that has been added.
Okay, thank you. Was it BA 21-013? Is that what you said, Director Newman? Or did I write it down wrong?
Nope, that's correct.
Okay.
So I would suggest that we take the consent agenda right now and then vote on the two items that have been requested to be voted on.
Okay, and I'm sorry, because she keep... I'm not sure what we're fading out. You're fading out.
Can everybody else hear me? Sorry about that. I would take the consent agenda minus the two items that have been requested to be voted on separately.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, but we're removing the two other items that will have a separate vote?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there... I'm sorry, is there any further discussion? This is a roll call vote?
Director Anne Holt. Gary, you need to take your mute off, I think. Okay, I see the thumb. All right. Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Mersbrach?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
And President Humbles?
Aye. Now we'll move to the other two items. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be correct. We could start with the item 013, which is the agreement, I believe, with the Metro Economic Alliance. And that would be a voice vote.
Oh, a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And same would then be true with the Personnel Report.
With the Personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Is that it, Laurel?
That's it.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our annual report from the Board Appointed Audit Committee. I'll turn the meeting over today for the introduction of our guest.
Thank you, President Humbles. I'm pleased tonight to have a couple of members from our Audit Committee here with us on the meeting tonight. We have Whitney Schreider and Gary Becker. They're both representing the committee. And Gary will... Becker has been on the committee for six years now. And this will be his final duty as a committee member tonight, presenting to the board here. And Whitney will be here as well to answer any questions if there are any questions. So if Laurel, if you could pull up the presentation, I'll let Gary take over from here. Okay, Gary. Your... Are you... Is your speaker off?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Thank you. I was double muted. I think Laurel had me muted, and I muted myself. So good evening, Board. It's a pleasure again to speak to you this evening on our annual report of the Audit Committee. And we've presented to you this year both a condensed report and a condensed presentation. A lot of the things you see every year are fairly repetitive. We wanted to really get this down, get a kind of our basic function and kind of the new things that we did this year. So as Laurel has on the screen here, this is kind of the recap of the annual things that we do each and every year. And what I would highlight on here is that we really have a lot of interaction with RSM, both from the standpoint of regular audit and our agreed-upon procedures that we do every year. Additionally, we do a lot of different reviews of various risks within the district, primarily focusing on the insurance, coverages, the IT, any legal matters that come, and anything else that would be any kind of risk-related that we try and run through a review of our committee. And then finally, I think another important thing that the board would like to know is that we do have opportunities to go into executive sessions is that we do have opportunities to go into executive sessions with RSM on a frequent basis, where we have chances to speak with them about their procedures, their relationship with the district, employees that they interact with. And I'm pleased to report that those are always very, very positive reports. And Dave and the entire accounting finance function are doing a really good job in those interactions. Next, if we go to the next report page, Laurel, some specific new things that we dealt with this year is that we really tried to focus, a continued focus, and look at the MIF program. This district's made tremendous strides in that MIF program. Kudos to the district as they did a fine job of, you know, I think, dealing with the, getting the participation levels to a point where the negative balance exposure to that MIF program has been greatly reduced. But we have made that a semi-annual look to try and get a report from the MIF to kind of keep our finger on the pulse of what's going on there. The other big thing that's very, very much something that you've dealt with as well is the impact of COVID-19. You know, we had to cancel our March meeting. We had to consolidate agendas for April and May. And those last three meetings, as indicated, were done via Zoom, much like this one is. But Dave and Sarah and the entire crew did a great job of making that work. And I feel like it, we got our jobs done and covered the things that we needed to cover. And I think the last thing I'd highlight here is community involvement of financial reporting that gets done in the committee. We're doing a really, I think, a better job over the last several years of looking at account level and specific comparisons to budget and getting good feedback from Dave and his team about why some of those nuances exist. So the next page is really a summary of the composition of leadership.
With the year funding.
Of the committee. And as Dave mentioned, I've been the committee chair, and this is both my last year on the committee and my last year's hearing. I'll be ably replaced by Maureen Obiatt, who is a, I think in her second term, and was chairman pro tem this year. And then Scott Arndendorf will be our pro tem in the following year. And as indicated, two long-term members, myself and Tom Hoffman, are retiring from the committee. Tom had many more years of service, will very, very much miss the insurance expertise that he brought. And just want to thank Tom for all those years of service. And probably the last thing on this page I'd highlight is that we are having a change in our senior manager with RSM. Chris Corporate Equity taking over for Heidi Obrik, Hope Hopkirk, excuse me. And Chris has been attending the meetings this year, and I think will have just a continued, really fine relationship with RSM. And the last thing, I think this is a repeat of a recommendation we've made before. It's just a, something that we feel that's still something important to consider, bring it to the board's attention, that the internal auditor, given the size and scope of our financial operations, would be something to consider, fully understanding that there's certainly budgetary constraints that go with that. And we're trying to perhaps backfill that with some of these re-procedures with RSM. But felt that that was important to, again, include this year. So that's it. I wanted to make this quick, and we'll open up for any questions you might have.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Gary and Tom, for your years of service. It's greatly appreciated. And does the board have any questions at this time? And we did, we do see the recommendation that you have made in our administration. I'm sure there will be some follow-up. So thank you, and thank each and every one of you on this Audit Committee. You are truly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
No questions? Okay. We'll move to our learning and leadership. Next, our superintendent and deputy superintendent. And welcome to the Cedar Rapids Community School District, Nicole. Will provide an update and overview on the Return to Learn Plan for our district. I'll turn it over to the both of you.
Thank you very much, President Humbles. We are anxious to share information with you tonight. And again, I'll iterate what I said at the beginning of our meeting tonight during the superintendent's report. This is the current draft. Every day, we get new information that allows us to be flexible in our thinking. But what we've been able to do, based on guidance from multiple avenues, that being from Department of Education, our local public health, Lynn County Public Health Team. And we are increasing our input from others, as noted earlier in board comment time. And I certainly appreciate that. We have gotten the initial staff feedback. CREA was gracious and kind to share their data. We have our staff survey that will go out this week, as well as staff input sessions. And then we will have our town halls with our community as well. So the one thing I think I have to emphasize is that during this pandemic, we've had to learn to remain flexible and nimble and change our plans quickly. But what hasn't changed are priorities for the safety and health of our children, of our staff, and our community. So really, that's been the guiding principle as we've been looking at our Return to Learn Plans. And as other districts, as mentioned earlier, like Des Moines and neighboring districts, are unfolding their plans, that's at everyone's top mind. And we're all doing our best to make the best decisions to support our children and our community. Everyone's very anxious for the school year to start, but the big question is, what will it look like? So we have options of what it will look like. We don't have the recommendation tonight to say, "This is where we will be come August 24th." And we hope to have that information at the end of this month, certainly by August 1st. So Laurel, thank you for driving for me tonight. We have our presentation. And thank you for introducing Deputy Superintendent Nick Quaker will be presenting with me tonight. And so I'll do the first half, and then I'll hand it over to Deputy Superintendent Quaker, who will get down into the details more around the learning components of our Return to Learn Plan. I'm going to provide some high-level guidance and also focus on some of those safety aspects. So as issued earlier this spring, the Department of Education required every school district to have a Return to Learn Plan. We submitted our plan to the Department of Education with really some compliance measures of the things that we were choosing to do or not do as a school district, which required the green box on the screen, which was, what was our plan to continue online or distance learning as an option if it is needed? And so we have some measures that we've taken in place as a school district to make sure that we can do that if it's necessary come this fall. On the middle box is really a hybrid of two options. The first being the distance learning option. And the third box is really the onsite, in-person delivery learning plan. We have been spending a lot of our time in the blue box and talking about what does learning look like under the pandemic and safety guidelines with in-person learning. And so our hybrid plan is really those two choices for our families. Is that if we were to be in person, for families who are not comfortable with that, we have options for them to go online. And that if it were to be necessary due to a breakout or due to safety concerns, we would have a plan in order to move to online for either cohorts of students, even isolated schools, if there should be a breakout within one of our schools. And so we have choice for families. So next slide, please, Laurel. So Lynn County Public Health this week will have a press conference on Wednesday, releasing some guidance for schools for Lynn County. And so as that information becomes more available, we might need to adjust along the way. But from a high level of those three different models of in-person learning, hybrid learning, and virtual learning, they have issued some guidance for us in regards to what this possibly could look like. So when we think about the three models, we need to consider some high-level things. One, consider social distancing as best as we can, and that is people at six feet apart. When you can't guarantee people being six feet apart from each other, then you really need to look at personal protective equipment. And so that is what we have been looking at as a school district, knowing that the nature of our learners may not be able to guarantee to keep them apart all of the time from one another. We certainly can look at ways in which we reduce student population within a classroom or even within a setting. But the biggest thing is to make sure that we have protected equipment if we can't keep folks socially distant from one another. So it's been nice to get some further guidance from our Lynn County team. And there will be further guidance provided to all school districts come Wednesday afternoon after their press conference. And we will have a document for all schools in Lynn County. So our plan may adjust as that becomes available. The next slide, please, Laurel. There we go. So we did conduct a family engagement survey in June, and some of that data was still rolling in in early July. We'll have a second deeper dive, and I loved some of the suggestions tonight to get even more feedback from our families. We had a total of a little over 5,000 responses. And we did have some translations, but yes, indeed, they were all electronic. And from that data, the biggest question was, are you comfortable sending your student to school come August 24th? And 54% were comfortable returning, 36% were not sure yet, and 11% are not comfortable with their students returning to school. So when we look at that data, some of the comments have been about managing from, really, a lot of the uncertainty is, yes, for health and safety, but also around managing family life. And so when we look at some hybrid models that perhaps other districts have proposed, like an every-other-day model with students divided by the alphabet, our family's input so far has told us that would be really difficult for them to manage. However, it doesn't mean that it's not something that we could consider as we move forward. But right now, as we look at a hybrid model, it would be, if we are live learning, we will have online options for families who are not comfortable with in-person learning. So, thank you, Laurel. So that data will continue to get additional feedback with our second family survey, which will dig down even a little deeper with some of those questions, as well as our staff survey that will be sent this week. So, thank you, Laurel. The next, the bar graph slide, perfect. So when we think about what the learning options, what could work, our community is telling us they believe the onsite learning would be our best option, that they'd be okay with a hybrid model. Again, they have some concerns about managing their family life, and then at home being the last preference area. So there is also some uncertainty with each one of those models. And I think that what we've learned from the spring, when we had optional continuous learning, is that under a required model, there would be more structures put in place so that we could provide families more support. And then we also have now our, for secondary students, our Virtual Academy is also an option for enrollment for our families as well. And our next slide. So these are the top concerns from the narratives that came from our families. Is that, number one, students getting and spreading COVID-19 is their top concern, two, not being able to socially distance appropriately at school, school cleanliness, school closing again, and then the readiness to move to the next grade level. And so it's good to see that our community has, obviously, health is the primary concern. Learning is always the concern, but knowing that we'll get our kids there, but we definitely need the method and the safest method to continue to serve them with their education. So as we look at finally here, before I hand it over to Deputy Superintendent Quaker, these are some things that we know that we have to continue to prioritize. One is providing parent and guardian choice of whether they would prefer in-person or online virtual. So if we aren't in-person, and if you're not comfortable with that as a family, know that online and virtual learning will continue to be an option, and it will be more rigorous than it was in the spring. We have decided as a school district to provide personal protective equipment for every single staff member. That would be a mask as well as a face shield. In addition to that, we will provide masks for every single student. And then at the elementary level, due to the learning needs and their visual nature, and there's especially early access learners, we would also provide youth-sized face shields to students at the elementary level. And then we would have additional face shields available for secondary students for unique learning populations. For example, students who are deaf and hard of hearing need to see people's lips move. Masks don't help with students learning in that arena. So one example where we would want to use a shield as an option, the best practice would be both things. The mask and the shield for our staff to wear that, depending on their work environment. If they're a deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher, for example, they may not wear the mask. They may only wear the shield so students can see their lips and as they instruct. So social distancing becomes more important in those environments as well. So we will be providing that equipment to staff. And as mentioned by our foundation, people like their brand, and they love their schools. And so the foundation has offered to brand those for our schools with logos and also partnering with some of our PTO organizations as well. So we definitely appreciate that. And as we supply that equipment as a district level, that is our commitment to the safety and security as our staff as best we can. The best thing we can do is cleanliness, though. Sanitation and making sure that there's rigorous sanitation plans put in place. Our custodial team has been putting that plan in place. Social distancing, all measures that we can take to keep social distancing as six feet apart as we can. We realize that that becomes a challenge in a large populated school. Also, in our, we'll have to do some things differently, lots differently, as we organize students into cohorts or into smaller groups, which means that the instructional day gets adjusted. That's where we need further staff input, is what does that actually look like? So this is high-level priorities. As we dig in deeper to our implementation plans, this is where we need much more staff input. Student-to-staff ratio as well, of course, as already mentioned. We have, depending on the square footage of a classroom, it could be 20 to 1 ratio of student to teacher. If we could make it less than that, that would be ideal, so that we can look at that ratio. However, managing that on a schedule and actually knowing the total population that will be returning will help us guide in that decision. And then frequent hand washing, and when hand washing is not available, having hand sanitizer. We will assure that there'll be hand sanitizer in every classroom. And then in addition to that, what's really important is that students are not sharing supplies. Many times, we, students bring in their supplies at the beginning of the year, and we dump them into buckets, and they have shared resources. We really need to have students have their own resources within their own learning areas and not sharing their supplies. Meal services will continue, of course, but how we do that will look different, perhaps even using classrooms. And what has not been communicated yet, in the spring, when we had our shutdown, we were able to supply meals from a summer learning program at nine sites, as we've been able to continue to do it through the summer. USDA has not guaranteed that that will be an option for the fall if we have distance learning. That is a concern for us. And so onsite meal plans, of course, will continue to be provided. But if we should be in an online environment, we are not sure what that plan will be yet. We're waiting for some more guidance around USDA. And then transportation. Students who are choosing to ride the bus, we would require mask-wearing, sanitizing both on and off the bus, and making sure that our attendants are able to support and aid students within that process. So a lot of, a lot of health concentration. And getting guidance, of course, from Lynn County Public Health has been a great help. And then we know that the guidance that they provide this week will provide even further guidance for all school districts in Lynn County. So that is my portion of the presentation. And as we get more into the learning piece, I'd like to hand it over to Deputy Superintendent Quaker.
Thank you, Dr. Bush. I'm excited to be here, and thank you to the school board for allowing us this time to present. So the first thing is the timeline, and we have staff feedback sessions. And those will be happening, we have Tuesday from 4:30 to 6:00, Wednesday from 12:30 to 12:00. be happening, we have Tuesday from 4:30 to 6:00, Wednesday from 12:30 to 2:00 this week, and then Thursday, again, from 7:00 to 8:30. So we're hoping that those times work for all the staff, and those are open to all staff. They'll be getting a more detailed email tonight. They got a general one last week. Tonight at 9 o'clock, they'll be getting an additional detailed one. There'll also be that additional family engagement survey shared out this week. If you look at the week of the 20th, virtual return to learn town halls to finalize district plans, that's where we'll be doing some of the same type of feedback that we're getting from staff this week, but continue to get feedback from parents and community members and tweak the plans that we have in place. Then the week of July 27th, our plan is to finalize the return to learn plans with families and have them begin indicating their preference for fall school openings, which we'll talk more about here in some of the next slides. And then by the 3rd, hopefully, we have families that have indicated what their preference is for fall and how they plan to send their students, whether it's face-to-face or whether they're going to check a virtual option for, for the fall, which will help us with the staffing plans. The school model of design, the current draft, of course, first and foremost, we're prioritizing staff and student safety. Secondly, of course, is that educational piece, and Dr. Bush talked about that in her part as well. And then third is limiting interactions between staff and students. So we've tried to really work hard, and it looks different between elementary, middle school, and high school, of what those interactions between staff and students can be and should be, again, focusing on health and safety first and foremost. So when our elementary schools, so we're going to offer the plan as the draft, is an in-person option where we would have students, if you, I'm actually going to go to the next slide so the board can see this, thank you. All pre-K5 students can return in-person for instruction, would be signed, a homeroom teacher that would stay with that cohort of students throughout the day. Our goal, again, is approximately 20 to 1 ratio. As you all know, some of our buildings have different sizes classrooms, different size of how many students, but that would definitely be the goal. And then we'd have at each trimester, a specials teacher would rotate to the cohort for art, music, and PE as our initial plan. So those teachers would have more students, but still a smaller cohort at the, at a time in case there is a positive COVID case that occurs. So face-to-face instruction, but again, limited contact with staff, limited 20 approximately to 1 ratio, so health and safety is first and foremost. They also would have that virtual, sorry, option where they could do a virtual model as well, and that would be available. Our plan is we're going to have some teachers, due to health reasons, that will not be able to return to school in the fall, and those teachers could be assigned and do virtual classrooms mixed of elementary students and provide that virtual instruction as an option for also students or families that don't feel comfortable or safe at this time, sending their students onsite. Our middle school model is, again, a little bit different, little larger buildings, but still follows somewhat of the same format for the in-person instruction. There'd be an advisory teacher that would be assigned a cohort that would remain with those students. So within that cohort, that teacher would not have to teach. So for example, I'm a science teacher, I wouldn't have to teach myself science and math and ELA to all of the students, but we'd have some of that virtual instruction occurring within that face-to-face model. Again, trying to limit the contact between students and staff for those health and safety reasons, but still provide that quality instructional component within the learning environment. Again, the goal, approximately 20 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio, and then advisory teachers, as I said, would facilitate that instruction delivered from those content teachers through that online instruction. So they'd help facilitate that in the classroom and help with that ongoing instruction and shift through that. So a little different model. There'd also, of course, be that virtual instruction that could happen for teachers that, again, cannot come back due to health reasons, and students that also have health reasons could be assigned to that virtual instructional piece. The high school is very different, and is very different because there's the number of students, as you know, is much larger in our high schools, the certifications of teachers is very different, and the number of offerings of courses is different. So right now, I, I can tell you today, we met as an OLL team from 9 o'clock this morning until 2 o'clock, and I know Cynthia and the head high school principals met for a few hours this afternoon. And we hope to have by later tonight a more cohesive plan, but we're looking at an in-person hybrid model of some potentially virtual in-person at the same time, again, due to the numbers of students and focusing on that safety first. But that will not be put in place finally till later on this evening, and then again, it won't be the final plan because we're, we're interested to see and excited to see what staff provide us for feedback. We do know that they're the people closest to the situation, so really excited to hear what they have to say and what feedback they provide within the next three days, and we can tweak this plan as that happens. Also, next week, I'm sure there's some families and parents that have some good feedback for what high school could and should like, look like in the fall. But our teams have been working on this. We want to make sure we have that consistent system-wide view, but we also want to make sure that we acknowledge that instruction does look different at preschool, elementary, middle school, and high school. There are some differences. My guess is you're going to have lots of questions for the instructional piece, for sure. So this is your opportunity, and I know we have some of the directors online here tonight. I want to say also, there's been a lot of people working really hard, including a lot of principals. I've had an amazing 13 days getting to work with people closely on this return to learn plan. I feel like I'm dreaming about it. But people are working really hard and trying to do everything what's best for students, for staff, for families, and making that health and safety a number-one priority, which is critical with education number two, which I think is really important.
Well, I, I would like to make a comment, and thank you for both presenting, because I know there is a concern of how we move forward within our district. I do have one question. When I was looking at the timeline and they have the family engagement survey, I always wonder, how do we get this information to all of our families? And I know it, it always cannot be electronically. Have you guys looked at how you can reach those that don't have internet access? Because we want to get input from, from everyone.
I'm going to let Adam talk about that because I know he's been intentionally working on that piece. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, no, this was, this is a great question that we've been working hard in the last few weeks to figure out. We've taken three approaches for this next one, but would be happy to, to think about other approaches as well. First is the email translated. Second is text messages. We know that many have phones that they can take it, and also translated in preferred languages. And the third that we are adding to this engagement survey will be food site links where people at the food sites will help families take the survey. It's not perfect, but it was the next best approach, that we know that many of our families are coming to those food sites. So we can capture that audience with a in-person administration, with someone actually helping them through question by question.
I might add, too, that we have a task force that's been established on what are the communication tools that we could look at. We would be putting that together, and if there's something, an additional, we're looking at peer sites and what they're, what they're using. We're also looking at, with our new website vendor, making sure that we did not pick one that did not have translation capabilities. Again, that's in the digital realm. But within the text, we're finding and getting good feedback that communication is coming through the cell phone, maybe not so much via email. So we're looking at all those different options, and we do have a task force set up to research those, and we're in the process of that because it's a, it's a huge focus for us.
Have, have you thought about those that you can't, you may not be able to reach by text? I know it was mentioned earlier, calling on the phone, is that an option that you guys might want to consider?
I think so. We did do that in the spring. We did, our principals helped lead some of that work with staff members, and absolutely, I think we can enlist. I know we have willing people willing to help. And so we started with our principals in the spring when we needed to get more information, and then they kind of created calling lists with staff members. And that did help us get more information when we had to do that technology survey.
And we also have, for example, for annual verification and getting information, we have special setups at the food sites where it could be one-on-one in human interaction. So we can gather some of that information, and those are going on, and we've set up a couple annual verification to get data and information from, from that, those communities so we could get that hands-on even in a social distancing environment, so.
Building on that, it, it seems that this, this last round of parent surveys, we had a little bit under a third of our student population respondents. So I'm wondering if we can, is there a possibility we can aim for at least 50% of our families to respond in some way to help guide us in the decision moving forward?
Do you want to take that? I know we looked, we did look at that data, and, you know, again, we're looking to other tools that could help increase that response rate.
Don't, this is Director Garlock. Do we have a list of families that we were sending learning packets home via US mail?
We do.
Could we send them a written survey through the mail? I know snail mail is like obsolete, but if we were getting learning packets that way, that might mean that that's their preferred method.
That's a great suggestion.
Other questions from the board?
Can the survey be with an SASE so that we're not asking families to, I mean, pay for postage if that's their, the way that they're needing to reply to that survey is by mail?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all that you said, Jennifer. Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Sure. I, I was asking if we're distributing, if we're choosing to distribute through mail to get some, some survey results from families that have that as their preferred method of communication, if we can include a postage paid, return postage paid?
Okay.
We will investigate that.
Other questions from the board?
This is Director Newman. I noticed on the various versions of the power, the pocket item that we got, that it was masks required by all, masks strongly recommended for students, and then masks required by all. Do we expect this to be our final, our final decision on this, or do you anticipate that potentially changing again?
We did change the language based on some clarifications we were able to get from Lynn County Public Health, as well as we need to consult with our attorneys. Anything that we do that the Department of Ed did not necessarily recommend, they didn't recommend masks at all, we need just to make sure that we've got some local support for that language. The reason that we started with strongly recommend was for students, special populations who would not be able to wear masks. But in understanding any requirements that we have, we always abide by students' accommodation plans. So whether that be their health plan, their individual education plan, or their learning need, we make adjustments. So we would like to use the language of required so that we have a strong front in regards to keeping safety as a priority, as well as confirmation that we're able to supply the equipment to staff and students.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Gary. I'm Director Anhalt.
That's fine. President Humble. All right. My question would be, I have several, but what happens when a staff member is tested positive? And then, then the follow-up, the next would be what happens if it's a student that tests positive? What's, what would be our response?
So on the proactive end, we would be requiring staff to take their temperature and that they be symptom-free to come to work. And so we have guidance for that, and the same for students. If on the reactive end, if someone tests positive, then we have an articulated plan of what happens then as well. Every single school is, will be required from a student perspective to actually have two locations for illness for students. One would be student gets a bump or scrape and needs to go to the nurse to get a Band-Aid versus another student is having symptoms that are potentially COVID-related. We actually have to have two intake centers, and so our Buildings and Grounds Crew with our nursing team has been preparing for that guidance that's been provided by the Department of Public Health and CDC guidelines. But if there is a result of a positive case, then we have another mitigation plan thereafter, which means that if, if we can contain the cohort model, for example, then it's immediate, of course, communication, making sure that the student is able, if it's a student, that they're able to, that we're able to support them until family member can come pick them up just with us in any illness. And then for staff, it's the same thing. And therefore, it could be that there, any student or staff member that came in contact with that individual, that we have to have a plan in place for 14-day potential quarantine of people. So there is a whole health plan that our nursing team has put together. Hats off to Sandy Byard, who has been working morning, noon, and night, keeping us updated with those, with those plans. So those plans would be issued to all staff and families so that if there should be a breakout, everyone would know how we would respond.
Any, thank you on that, but as you're speaking, I, I, it also generated a thought that we've had in the past trouble finding a number of substitute teachers. That has been critical. And as we move forward, I would just kind of anticipate that we're going to see maybe more, more staff that are not at work for one reason or another, and how will accomplish staffing those classrooms?
Yeah, and so if, this is where that online option might have to become more in play. So if we have a teacher who has been exposed or diagnosed, that means that that classroom has been exposed and diagnosed, which means that we might have to have virtual learning for those students for a temporary time period while they're at home with another staff member providing their education. And so the complexity of substitutes increases. This is a national epidemic, it's not isolated to Cedar Rapids Community School District. But it, we're going to have to lean on some of those measures of even using each other with online instruction, but also making sure that our substitutes have access to that as well, and that they're able to supply instruction that way if needed. So we have actually considered adding to our permanent substitute job pool. So as you know, we have permanent subs in our buildings, and so we were thinking of a district-wide, and Linda could even speak to this, adding some positions that are district-wide positions that could kind of be on call and go to where they're needed as we move forward. The benefit to that is that those particular positions have a different salary rate, and they do have some benefits that regular substitutes do not. They do become maybe more attractive positions, but that means that we're scooping from the pool of our regular substitute population. So it is definitely a continued concern.
And Director Anhalt, on the, on the curriculum side of things, when students and teachers are not able to return to their building and they are working remotely, we want the, the experience to be as mirrored to the in-person option as possible. We know there's going to be outbreaks, and we know people are going to have to go back and forth, and so we want the virtual option that, that our teachers are teaching to mirror the in-person experience as much as possible, so there is a seamless transition should there need to be a, a switch. And so students are still on the same scope and sequence, the same learning progressions, all those kinds of things in the event of an outbreak.
Thank you. How do we plan on getting at the, the ratio of 20 to 1? I know it's the class size, it's been an issue for, I think, us for, for quite a while on, on trying to reduce class size. How do we do that with, with hiring more staff? And how about classroom space in itself?
Some, I'll start with just maybe a broad response, and then I would invite executive directors Christensen and Zimmerman and Phillips, perhaps, to, to chime in here in regards to each one of those grade levels. But one thing that we know- to each one of those grade levels. But one thing that we know already is we've had quite a few inquiries of families who are not going to be choosing a live option, if that's the prefer, if that's the route that we go. They're going to be keeping their students home. So we're going to probably already have a bit of a reduced population. It's hard to predict grade level and numbers and where, and where those quantities lie, for sure. So that's one piece. But secondly, I think I would ask Eric Christensen to chime in a little bit here, and some deep conversations with our elementary principals, who then be in turn getting more feedback from their staff members about what that might look like.
Thanks, Noreen. Yeah, basically, we've been talking about this for the last couple of weeks. And Director Anhalt, you're absolutely right. Personally, myself and the elementary principals are a little worried about this because we do have class sizes that are going to exceed the approximate 20, if you want to call it that. So we're looking at pooling teachers, just trying to find ways to limit that class size. But the unknowns right now, and this is, I think, a really important piece, is we don't know yet how many kids are going to opt for that virtual option, let alone do we know right now how many teachers are going to be coming on-site. And so that data right there, those two pieces, will allow us then to start doing, it's a math game, to be honest with you, and we're going to have to look at those numbers to decide what's best in terms of safety for kids and our staff. I'm really encouraged about the face masks and the face shields, particularly at elementary, because I think most of us know that our, our little ones, even PK through five, it's going to be difficult to keep masks on those children. So the face shields will help. But it is a math puzzle that we're going to have to figure out here in the next couple of weeks in terms of class size.
Thank you. I hate to dominate the questions, but I do have a, I do have some, some string. A lot of this seems like it's going to be extra cost. We're talking about masks for even though we're getting some public health sanitizer. I'm concerned about how the workload for the custodians, that they're going to do almost deep cleaning on a daily basis. I mean, we've had, their job has been full in the past without this extra workload. So how we accomplish that without adding extra staff, and, and this is all extra, extra money? Will the state provide some, some, some resources to help us deal with this COVID-19?
I see Dave Nicholson raising his hand. He's excited to respond to this.
Director Anhalt, for a lot of the PPE we're purchasing, those are all FEMA-eligible expenditures for a lot of the PPE. So we have started that process with FEMA. And, and so with FEMA, we would be able to get 75% federal funds and, and 10% state funds. So we're at 85%. So we would be looking at expending 15% for all the PPE that we are purchasing. That's, and, you know, in addition, we do have the CARES Act funds, but we're using most of, of the, we're directing most of the PPE through FEMA. So that way, we can allocate more dollars for other support needs that we have for the CARES Fund. And, but what, 15% adds up. So we're looking at 15%. We cannot use the CARES Act money for the match of the 15%. We have, it's going to be a general fund expense on the 15%. So that will be a chunk. But majority of that, we believe that we can get through FEMA. And as for custodial, I mean, that's, that's the area that's going to be our biggest challenge because we do have, we don't have the staff that the district once had in the custodial program. And so, but with, we did purchase some electrostatic guns that you can actually quickly disinfect areas very quickly with that. So that will be some of the tools that our custodians will be using in the evenings to help quickly take care of some areas that they didn't have in the past. So we will be working with that. And, and then, you know, and then when we have breaks, we would be doing the deep cleaning, you know, too, as well, when we have breaks. But, you know, custodians will be really focusing on the high touch points, you know, and their cleaning. That's what they're going to be focused on. And so, yeah, but that's the area that is going to be most challenging for us, just because of the fact that we, we don't have the staff that we once had in the past. But we're able to get on some tools that will help mitigate some of those concerns because of how much we can do with an electrostatic gun to be able to clean.
Thank you very much. I'll, I'll step aside and let, let another board member maybe come up with some questions.
I have some additional questions about funding. Did the Iowa Legislature provide any, any COVID-19 Relief Act money towards education?
Well, as of right now, we have the CARES Act funds, which was federally legislated. I know maybe we're going to get some of the mental health, possibly, where we get, see any of that mental health money that she's allocated. But I haven't heard of any additional funds other than that at this point in time. So.
So, so just to be, I just want to be clear, that, that public education received no dedicated funding from the Iowa Legislature to protect students in public education. Is that correct?
That is, yes. So.
I see. I see. So we are going to need to cover 15% of the expended expenditure for some PPE for staff and students. We're paying for PPE for staff and students. And that will come out of our general fund. Is that going to cause us to need to reach into our reserve?
Chances are, yes. And we will have an opportunity to go to the School Budget Review Committee. And that would be one of the things that I would ask for additional authority for that match, if we, to try to get the authority back for that piece of it. And I think there will be a lot of schools doing the same thing. So.
Excellent. I, I think probably so too, since we're not getting into this Relief Act money. I'm wondering what financial support is available, if any, if there are staff that they need to provide additional barrier for safety measurements other than personal protective equipment such as a visor or a mask?
So for example, like rubber gloves or something like that? We, we certainly would have a general supply at the school level, the PP equipment that will personally supply, where the masks and the shields, and then hand sanitizer, of course, for every classroom. And so as, if there are additional requests for specific concerns, I think we'll need to address those, probably building by building, case by case, depending on what the need is. And it certainly might be about the student population of that particular individual serving. And so we do have, if it's, so for example, if it's in a special education classroom, it might be special education funds that we use. It might be building-based funds that we use, and it might be a district cost. If it's a personal preference for a teacher, for example, I don't like the mask you brought, you bought me, then we would ask that they would supply their own. And so that, we will do our very best to meet everybody's needs, especially students and staff, but also realizing that we may not know all of those needs until someone discovers it. So it's just like, this particular kid is not doing this, can't use this particular item, and then we're going to need an alternative.
So. Sure. Another funding question, thank you for that. Another funding question I have is about student supplies. Since we're sitting in a district that's almost 50% free and reduced lunch across board, many times when, when we're in some of our schools with the group sharing of items, that's no longer going to be available. So I'm wondering what funding source is going to be used to provide those items that will be needed in classrooms, especially in elementaries, so that, I'm just kind of wondering what we have designated there.
So it's interesting, like the backpack program that we've had, we have lots of partners who supply things at the beginning of the year. CRPD has adopted kids and offered supplies at the beginning of the year, as well as our, our own district does that as well. Each, so the clarification, each student usually has the supply, designated supply list for their individual supplies. It's when they come to school, we make them these community bins. We won't be able to do that. And of course, teachers always have extra supplies within their classrooms. That usually comes out of building or classroom budgets as well. But we all know teachers, the bleeding wonderful hearts that they are, are always buying more things for kids. And so for us to be able to know where the need is so that we can have the supplies. So I feel confident that we'll, that students will have their individual supplies. Our practice needs to change of having shared bins. And then we'll need some backup supplies, for sure. And so that will be a, a cost. I don't know if it will be additional cost at this point in time. We'll have to see about that. Because we usually do have the backup supplies.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Other questions from-
One more funding question, and then I will step back and let somebody else lean in. And that is just about COVID testing. Are, are the COVID tests free? Or are they, do they require a cost? And if there is a cost, and we have staff that needs to be tested, who's going to be covering that cost? And if we have students that have been exposed because somebody's tested positive, if there is a cost, who would be covering that cost?
We'll start with Linda for staff, if you can.
Yeah. So Jennifer, to be honest with you, I don't know the exact answer to that. My understanding is from just what I've heard and seen in the media, is that that cost is covered at 100%. So I can check with Sandy as well to see if that has changed because they are changing rapidly, daily in some cases, especially around some of the travel arrangements and just different things. It's changing very, very quickly. So I'll, I'll circle back with Sandy. But to my knowledge, that is a covered cost.
Linda, it's a little difficult to hear you. You might get a little closer to your speaker, please. Thank you.
Right.
And another point of that, and you touched, touched on this just a little bit about transportation. If we're having students tested because they've been exposed, what if we have students that have a transportation obstacle? How are we going to make sure that they have access to testing?
So we work with families all the time on gaining access. And so I think that what we would have to do is work with individual families, seeing what's possible, seeing what the nearest testing site is for them. And also, if the district needs to provide some sort of support for transportation, certainly that could be considered. But usually within, I would say influenza or other diagnoses, usually families find their way to, you know, gain that access. But if there is a barrier, we do have resources to support families and that individualized transportation. Sometimes it is two staff members and, you know, using a district vehicle and getting that family to where they need, need to be. And we lean a lot on our student services teams for that. So that would be our hope. And just as a reminder, though, for our school district students, we do supply city bus passes for all of our students for transportation. And I think there's going to be an increased population utilizing that resource this year for many reasons beyond getting tested, but just for access reasons. So I'm super grateful for that partnership with City of Cedar Rapids. But we would do it case-by-case basis and making sure that we're helping our families get what they need.
So just building on that, and then I'm, and then I'm done for a little bit, I promise. I know that people have questions. That would be, so if, if we have a cohort, a classroom where there's been a positive test, and people are isolating, will we be requiring students to have tests before they are returning to in-person instruction?
No. They have to be symptom-free.
Do we have other questions from the board?
I have a question.
Director Garlock?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm, I'm curious about the role of Lynn County Public Health in all of this. If we have a cohort of students that has been, that has a case, does the Public Health Department make a ruling as to whether those kids are all sent home? Do we make that decision? At what point do we shut down a school? Are there, I guess what I'm asking is, are there data points that are pre-established so that when we find ourselves in a situation that we're not scrambling to figure out the rules and the guidelines? Is Lynn County Public Health helping us with that? What's their role?
So I just want to say how grateful I am for Lynn County Public Health for stepping up for schools in the past couple of weeks. So we didn't get a lot of guidance from the state level. And our county said, we're going to do it for our schools locally. So they've produced a document that they allowed superintendents in, in the Grantwood AER, Grantwood Area Education Agency, provide some feedback on that document. It is grounded in CDC and public health guidelines, but specifically some recommendations they have for our county schools. That second draft was reviewed today, and then now it'll be released later this week. It does address your question, Director Garlock, in regards to their guidelines and recommendations for, from a public health perspective. Again, our district nurse has a document and guiding documents in regards to how we'd respond. But I'll just use baseball and softball as an example. If there was suspicion, and this was statewide, actually, of a case or someone tested positive on a team, that team was taken out of practice and play for two weeks. So we would have very similar guidelines. So you wouldn't need a number of, five people have to be, you know, test positive in one location in order for a classroom to shut down. It's really one. And so in regards to though, a school or a bigger population being shut down, Lynn County Public Health is, is very willing to be our partner and provide further guidance around that. I, I'm just so appreciative of their partnership.
Yeah. And Noreen, if I can just add a little bit too, I, I echo everything that you just said. Can you hear me a little better? Okay, I switched, I switched to my laptop. And so we've had some experience with this already within our daycare. And Lynn Public Health has been very consistent in working and partnering with us when we have cases within the daycare. And in both of those situations, they have recommended that we, in some cases, close a classroom, close a center, and people self-isolate for 14 days. So what we suspect will happen is if we have a case in a classroom, we will consult with the Lynn County Public Health, and they will guide us as to whether or not, how far we may need to make changes. So do we need to change, close a classroom? Does it go beyond the classroom because of the contact, et cetera, et cetera? But they would be working with us side by side.
Thank you. I also have a question back to staff. If a staff member is ill and they have to self-quarantine, or maybe exposed, maybe not ill, but they have to self-quarantine for 14 days, if they don't have that much sick leave, what happens? Do, is that a contractual situation at that point? Or how do we help our staff in these?
Yeah. So this is a little bit trickier. There's all sorts of factors that come into play in regards to how we will handle individual situations. So one, we have what's called the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, or the FF-CRA. And that provides six qualifications as to why people may be gone. And they're pretty cut and dry. So I've, I've, I've been asked to quarantine, I've been advised by my healthcare provider, I have daycare issues, et cetera. The, the one that is still sort of evolving is what happens in a situation where they have been around somebody who has tested positive. And so they haven't necessarily, necessarily been asked to quarantine, but they've been around somebody who's positive. And/or that case results in us closing the site, or closing the classroom, say. Those are situations that we're going to have to work through to figure out exactly how we're handling the leave. So there is, part of this is going to be covered under the FF-CRA. There's up to 10 days in many cases that they have. Many of these will be covered under their own personal illness, or we may make other decisions as well, depending on the case by case. So this is still sort of evolving, and we're still working through all these scenarios. I have another meeting, a subsequent meeting with legal tomorrow to work through some additional scenarios. So we're getting, employees have been great. They're contacting us, letting us know what some of their scenarios are and what some of their situations are, so that we can start to work through those.
Any other questions from the, the board? I mean, we've had some great questions seeking clarification. And so I thank the board for asking those questions. And Jen, do you?
I'm just holding up.
Director Newman, I can't, I can't see you. You have a question?
Sure, I think this question is addressed to Deputy Superintendent Quaker, which welcome, by the way. Wow, what a, what an entrance to the workforce here. But my question on the return to learn plan is, do we anticipate that if a parent makes a choice to either enroll their child in, in person? Or if they choose the virtual option, that they will need to stick with that for the remainder of the school year? Will there be sort of opt-in, opt-out periods? Or will it be, will be as flexible as we can whenever we need to be?
A great question. And we had that conversation as a team today. And as much as we can be flexible, we definitely want to be flexible with that situation. The new virtual academy is something completely different. And we're asking, you know, if parents sign up for that, that would be, you know, committing to that longer term. But for this, some flexibility, we talked about, I'm sure there's going to be some parents who think, yeah, we're going to do the at-home and virtual learning and a couple of weeks in, it's just probably, it might not work for them. And they change their mind and we have to definitely be flexible and allow them to change their mind and have open arms back up and accept them back into the buildings, for sure.
Do we expect that to be different at the elementary level? Because that's not part of that secondary school virtual academy. This is different, but it's still a different teacher and a different, different potentially curriculum, right?
Yeah, yeah. And this is a kind of a confusing part that we need to shore up with our community in the next week. So if you're at the elementary level, your choice is going to be in-person with your teacher as usual, except with smaller class sizes, or you're going to a virtual model taught by a Cedar Rapids teacher using our Cedar Rapids curriculum. If you're at the middle school or high school level, you may have the option, three, three options total. One is in-person in this cohort. One is going to be the fully virtual academy, which is more like a year-long, multi-long-term commitment. Or the middle virtual option where you're still with a Cedar Rapids teacher using the Cedar Rapids curriculum. And you can kind of switch back and forth if need be on a, on a case-by-case basis. We're going to ask parents to commit for a semester, I think, just so that we can, we can staff adequately. If we're, if we're not keeping tight on that, we could have back and forth constantly. And so either option parents choose, we want to say, here's what it means to choose in-person. Here's what it means to choose our remote learning option. And here's what it means to be full virtual academy. And each one is going to come with a, a set of guidelines that helps parents understand what that choice implies and what the timeframe needs to be. So excellent question.
Thank you very much. And I think that that choosing for a semester is really fair.
Yes. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, who was that? I'm wondering what criteria would drive the decision to remove remote learning as a delivery method?
You ask a big question. And I, I know that we are watching what's happening nationally, what, what's happening at the state level, what other districts are doing. And so I think we, we're going to pay attention as best we can to how other municipalities and school districts are thinking about this issue. For some people, they think it's when there's a vaccine and then that's when we can end this. I'm, I'm confident the State Department of Education will provide some longer-term planning help as the year progresses for us.
So let me just, for clarification. So, so if we're doing this hybrid method and a family chooses that they want to do virtual instruction, will that be available for the entirety of the school year?
Yes, it will. This is the plan for the entire school year. And I would say if there's a family that's considering, I want to do this long-term and actually I just want to be in virtual for the next couple of years. CRVA at grade six through 12 is really where we're going to direct them to go. I think that's the longer-term solution. The remote learning we're putting in place this year isn't going to be in place all year long, but it may not be here next year, depending on where we're at. So hopefully that clears it.
And then in that hybrid method, is, in the hybrid method, does that involve, like I've seen some of the other plans, the hybrid method sometimes involves some classroom time and some virtual time. And then some, can you choose all classroom or all virtual? Or how, how has that worked out?
So, go ahead, John.
Superintendent Bush has been, been very clear with, with some of the parameters we've been asked to design around, including giving our families as consistent a schedule as possible. And so having five days of learning allows for families to know what they can count on if, for in-person learning or remote learning. And that will help their decision-making process. And there are some other complex hybrid models out there that are under consideration, but they do come with some really limitations in terms of transportation, in terms of how families are scheduling their childcare time. So I think Superintendent Bush, you want to build on that some, but it's, it's a complex challenge.
Yeah, I'll take that baton. And really the, some of the narrative that came from our first family engagement survey was really clear that families were although appreciative of perhaps a potential every-other-day model and they appreciate that that could reduce class size, they said, but just so you know, I won't be able to do that. I, I can't do that as a, as a working parent. I can't do that to manage my family. I won't be able to do that for childcare. And as I'm listening to other districts who have created those plans, they also creating alternative daycare plans where really students are still kind of coming to school, but they're in a daycare model and not in the learning environment. So it's very complex. So as we thought about hybrid, it was how can we offer two options for families with, with safety in mind? And so I do think though, when I look at the potential of the example that you used, Director Borcheting, of an every-other-day model, let's say it's even an every-other-week model, would work best for us probably at the high school level because those are our most independent learners. They're the ones who've had the one-to-one laptop experience to the greatest degree at this point in time. And we don't have to worry as much about childcare for that population. Definitely, like I, I've had, I've raised a high schooler. He still needed supervision and nudges to do the work. But that is, that has been our concern with the alternating schedule model. We may get to that point if we have, we have some prepared examples that have been supplied for us. Lynn County Public Health has also provided some examples of what that hybrid model could potentially look like. If we get there for health concern needs and have to do that. It, it's just a navigation and we're just trying to keep our family and community in mind of what they can actually manage. It's a lot to ask. It's a lot to ask the family.
Director Tominski, did you have a question?
Yeah, if I may. So as we're thinking about, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the high school plan didn't seem like it was quite ready for primetime, right? So later on tonight, you know, we'll, we'll see some things on that. Thinking about like safety and like as parents and families make these decisions to attend or not to attend, I don't, I, I tend to think that people are maybe opt to attend. And then once, once they get there, they're like, all right, this really is not the safety that I was anticipating for a variety of reasons. So just preparing ourselves for what that might look like as people get in there and realize social distancing is, seems impossible or people aren't wearing masks, it's not getting enforced. So I assume that we're preparing for that. That's not so much a question, just like seeing heads nod. So I think I'm on the same page. The, the 20 to one, so there's like this talk about the 20 to one, the, the ratio. And, you know, it's, I'm, I'm getting the vibe that that's like a desired state and not something that anybody is willing to commit to. But I think that would be one of the things that a family would and a teacher would, would be concerned with, right? So at what point will, I know that the cohort that my kid is getting signed up for is 27 or like what's the, what's the upside of that limit? Do you guys have any thoughts on that?
I think that one's really hard. We don't want to over-commit and under-deliver. So until we get feedback from families and from staff on, you know, whether they plan to come back to the face-to-face environment, it's really hard to navigate. Like we've looked at staffing numbers and how many students we foresee coming, but we're just guessing. So it's kind of a guessing game. So we put that 20 approximate, knowing that if we could have it there or smaller, that would be great. We also don't want to end up in a classroom setting where there's 23 fifth graders wanting to go to school. And we're, we're telling three of them, well, I guess you're going to have to go virtual or do something else because we don't have space. I think as time goes on, by the beginning of August, we'll be able to put some clear-cut numbers out there and communicate what those numbers are with families.
I'm sure a lot of people might not say that they would desire this, but if given the option of having a classroom that's closer to 20 or not, you know, if, if a, if a family had to switch a building, at least temporarily, is that something that we're considering? It sounds like not, I, I mean, I think we all know our buildings aren't evenly distributed. So is there a way for us to weigh that in some of the decisions? And so Director Tominski, for the virtual at the elementary and middle school level currently, if we're taking all the teachers who are not able to return to the classroom and all the students that are not able to return to the classroom, we've been projecting that's going to be around 20% based on what the community's currently told us. And so, but we know that 20% that can't return is not evenly distributed across schools. So there could be one of our middle schools that has 60% of staff who are able to come back and 40% who are not. And so the idea is to have an extra middle school that's pooling all the teachers and all the students who are not able to go back. And so they're taught centrally as a cohort and that can help kind of even the numbers out a little bit. But it really does depend on how many ultimately decide at the end of the month what they're going to do once we, once they've got more of a plan in front of them. But I think at least having this extra virtual option where we're pooling teachers and students does allow us to, to manage a little bit of the unevenness, but it, it will be definitely a challenge.
Yeah, I don't, I don't envy anybody that's, that's trying to do this. I'd be remiss if I didn't ask for an update on like, how are we doing on the one-to-one timeline? Is everything, you know, as, as we expect the devices will be ready?
It's going to be very close. It was a, a big push at the end, but I think we're, we're there. I just got an update this afternoon that all of our middle school devices will be out within the next week or so to the building. So we've fully deployed those. We've got our iPads here and we expect the Chromebooks in sometime around the end of this month. We're going to be, Dell projects us to be a little short. We expedited some, but we've got other devices in place for pulling, you know, the, the machines back from other locations to, to backfill that if we need to. If we start face-to-face, as we're projecting in this plan, it's a little less of a, a big deal at the elementary though, because those devices were going to be staying at school anyway. So, but Dell projects now that they'll have all of our devices here by the end of August, which is a much better timeline than they initially shot us, which was the end of October. So we're, we're, we're stepping right along, so.
Just two more questions if I can. One, just like I didn't hear any talk about like the potential use of outdoor classrooms. So like when a kid is, you know, gets to school, it's, I'm sort of envisioning get them to a classroom safely and try to limit the amount of movement. But the thought of getting kids outside and actually treating the outdoors as a classroom, is that something that we're considering? Is that going to be encouraged or any thoughts on that?
We discussed that as well and definitely are going to encourage that for health and safety reasons. I think it's always good to move your classrooms outdoors. We were letting, allowing principals to, to work with their staff on some of those details, but they definitely know that's an option. Of course, when it becomes winter, that won't be. So we weren't going to put all of those details within the plan, but we've had those conversations. And I think it's definitely something that would be good for students and staff, especially in the fall.
And then a last question, I'll yield the floor. Just talking about transportation. So we talked about, you know, for busing, we're going to sanitize on the way in, the way out. I didn't hear necessarily anything about limiting the number of people on buses or any sort of spacing. And I was hoping that maybe somebody could provide some clarity on that.
Yeah, and I think Dave, you can jump in here with me as well. We have had, this has been a very complex conversation. The initial CDC guidelines said that they would allow for 12 people on a bus. For us, that would mean we would be running a quadruple to six times the number of routes we run every day, which means we would be running school probably from seven till midnight in order to get kids to and from school in a scaffolded way. As we've, as we've gotten further guidance, it seems to have loosened up a little bit. And that really, if we look at everybody wearing safety protective equipment on the, on the bus, sanitizing on and off of the bus, they're there for a short limited time and then supervision, that we would be able to have our capacity on the bus. What's complex for us is we have a lot of moving parts in regards to other relationships. So just for example, one of our internal relationships is our own magnet school program, which has a whole other layer of bus routes. We also allow for tuition for some families who qualify, who are not necessarily within the two-mile zone, but they may qualify for tuitioned transportation. That has added complexity. And then we have relationships, for example, with our non-public schools. As we look at all of those complexities, we are going to have to make some tough decisions here as our resources are limited and we can't be over-capacity on our buses. And we also have, some of our most vulnerable staff members are in that work group and have, some have already indicated that they are not going to be returning to work. One, because they don't need to, but also they don't want to risk their health due to being over a certain age or having a health concern. So Scott Wing, our Director Transportation, we've had some deep conversations about what all those factors would look like. But at this point in time, we would be looking at running our, for students who qualify for transportation, our, our routes and having our regular student population on those buses. If we did an alternating or a rotating busing routes, the only way that we'll be able to do or have any flexibility is if we take out some of those other moving parts that has already spread us pretty thin. So that's been the ongoing conversation around transportation. Dave, do you have anything to add?
One of the things that we also, that we know we will be doing is we're working diligently to get our busted, a number of additional bus attendants hired. We typically, we have about 80% of our routes having a bus attendance on. And so we're working hard to try to get some additional bus attendants. And our, our goal is to try to have an additional bus attendant available for every route. But that's what we're trying to get done. We will, we did get the okay by the Department of Ed to mount a hand sanitizer on the bus so that, but it's not alcohol-based. But, but it is a hand sanitizer that still has a pretty high, you know, rate of killing viruses and bacteria. But for the reason why we can't have the normal hand sanitizer is the flammable, you know, 7% alcohol-based. We can't have it on a bus, but we did get the okay for that. And so the students, we're, we're going to be doing the loading from the back, unloading from the front, trying to make that happen to minimize the kids kind of interacting with, with, with each other as much as possible. We'll encourage family members to sit together on, on the, on the buses so that they're always together. So hopefully they'll keep them together. So we're going to do what we can to minimize. But yes, what Noreen has said, it's the ideal situation of 12 to 13, you know, on a bus. We just cannot accommodate that unfortunately, so.
And in the interest of time, and I think we've all had some great questions for our administrators. And, and I'd like to suggest too, if you have additional questions, that you could send them to. Like if, if I could just finish. Oh, okay. Hold, if you could, also we can get those to Superintendent Bush and Deputy Director Quaker. I want to make sure I said your name right. But yes, Director Mersbrach, if you have a question?
Well, I wanted to say, just on behalf of our teachers, because I know the administration has received communication from the teachers about their concerns about safety. And I also want to speak up for them as an essential employee myself, who has been working through the pandemic every day. They are the ones who are going to be in the classroom bearing the risk if we send kids back to school. And the teachers that I know, what I know about them is that they believe in in-person learning more than anybody else. And so that they're reluctant to go in-person and teach the kids, which is what I know they would prefer to do, really speaks to me about how real their concerns are about being that frontline of, you know, dealing with potential exposure every day. And so I just wanted to say that. And then I wanted to ask, I don't have the information in front of me. When was the family engagement survey that was included in the plan that we saw tonight? The one that said about 50%, 50 some percent, you know, would be most comfortable returning in person? When was that survey conducted? I didn't have that information in front of me.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago? And so, you know, keeping in mind that two weeks ago, the country and in the state were in a much different place in terms of, you know, people's perceptions of the virus. And potentially two weeks from now, we could be in an even, a, a different place again, you know, farther down the path. I hope that, you know, I'm encouraged by a lot of what I hear tonight, but I think we still have a long way to go before the plans of tonight and in-person learning become a reality. And that's just from how I've been looking at it. And, you know, given what's changed in two weeks and communications received from teachers, I think two weeks ago, people would have been less reluctant and now people are more reluctant. And I think that's understandable. I wanted to know, are we encouraging, are we, you know, we're kind of laying the decision in a hybrid model to either go back or come in person at the feet of every family? Are we encouraging as a community, as a district, trying to say, we think it would be best if you're able to, to stay home and in the safety, interest of everybody's safety, you know, we want to encourage people to go home and we're going to have a great program for that rather than just waiting on the numbers? Have we done anything like that or thought about doing any encouragement like that?
Go ahead, go ahead, John.
I had the distinct privilege of reading hundreds or thousands of comments from our families when we did our most recent survey. And I think what was striking, and we also actually did some, some lengthy phone calls with families and just said, hey, just tell us how it went this spring. Tell us what your hopes and dreams are. Tell us what you'd like to do in the fall, just to do some kind of empathetic interviews with, with families to get their perspective from, from across the range, elementary, middle and high school. And then parents are very polarized on this. Parents, many of them told me strongly, I will not send my kid back to school until there's a vaccine. No, thank you. I know you're going to do all you can to keep it safe, but we can't, we can't really support that. While others' families said, and more of them, we need to go back to school. Schools need to be open. We need these buildings open as quickly as possible because of, of these very various reasons. And please keep them safe. And so given that people are on such opposite ends of this, I think, I don't know that we're going in with a bent on, you need to do, choose this one or this one, but we would do want to give those options to families and say, we, we know that you're, there's a lot of things going on in your lives. Here's two options that are meeting those very different needs and very different situations you're in. And I think that's responsive to a lot of the comments they were, they were writing.
Okay. And then we talked a little bit about earlier and just something that I was reading earlier about other places across the world that have had kids back in school. You know, talks about the difference between the older students as a potential risk of transmission and the younger students. Have we considered any farther or is there a point where we would consider doing all online to the greatest extent possible for high school students or middle school students? And, you know, I know it's going to be very cost prohibitive to really reduce, you know, closer underneath 15 for class size ratio for elementary school students. But, you know, have we considered anything like that in terms of, because if the high school students would be a greater transmission risk and they are, like the superintendent said, are most independent learners, is that kind of a first step that we would take to potentially deal with the system as a whole?
And I think maybe Executive Director Phillips can extend further. This has been, you, I love that you highlighted Director Mersbrach the past two weeks. We seem to have changing information, different information every day, which is why our, our plan remains flexible. But you're right, high school, as it had the least amount of information shown, is exactly the question that you're asking. We although have limitations at high school because of the master schedule and such independent learners, we also might have some more flexibility because of their age. So maybe what Director, Executive Director Phillips may have further comment about what the high school team's been discussing?
Yeah, thank you. We have really been trying to consider the safest option that still allows the most opportunities for our high school learners. And so really what we're considering the most is a hybrid option, which brings students into the building probably twice a week with online learning three days a week. Would be looking like an A/B day type model. And we would cohort that model, so we only have up to 50% of our student body in the building at any one time, just because we know we still will have passing periods to have to deal with. And so basically students would take three or four classes on an A day and then take the other three or four classes that they're enrolled in on a B day for half of the population. So let's say last name letters A through M. And then the following two days, N through Z will come and take their three classes, three to four classes on their A day and three to four classes on B day. On opposite days, students have asynchronous online learning. And so our high school teachers essentially would be creating learning plans for students to, half of them be in front of them for whatever activity or in-person type event, performance measure, whatever needs to happen for that, while also creating self-directed online learning and interactions. And then what we'd like to build in is a day on Friday where we basically have our MTSS or intervention model. And so we, there'd be explicit time to have office hours and check in with students online and also outreach to any students and families who maybe we weren't able to connect with throughout the week, just to make sure we're having that built-in social emotional touch point every week. So really trying to be intentional and explicit as to how do we allow our students to maintain course options while protecting health and safety by not having more than 50% of a student body in a building at any given time and building in layers of support. If a student can attend on a, on a certain day, Friday could be a day where a student who was absent Monday and needed to take a test now could come to the building Friday when, could be a makeup day where there's very reduced amount of buildings in there because we're doing more online check-ins and reach out to families and community at that point. It's really in the elementary stages of development because there's so many details to consider. At the high school level, because of graduation requirements and certification of teachers, the sheer number of students that we're having to consider and think about. But really that hybrid model as phase one. And then in this plan, we have developed a couple of other phases if the conditions of the pandemic change, so that we do have pivot points and that we can really shift as needed, both for students and our staff. And so that's really what we're looking to develop at the, at the high school level. We feel like there's still a need to be able to bring students into the building, both for that face-to-face contact instruction, but for labs, for performance-based classes, for CTE or project lead the way courses, for things that just would really be a struggle to do online only, trying to develop a plan that meets the needs of everything.
The, those of you who've been in our.
The asynchronous instruction, at least for this board member, please. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for asking. So when we do online learning options, there's asynchronous and synchronous. And so asynchronous would be at my own self-directed pace and time. I can log in and do what I need to do versus one of our phases does move to synchronous online learning. So there may be students in the classroom and there may be a group of students who's also logging in at the same time that that classroom lesson is taking place. And so that would be called synchronous learning because they would be logging in at the same time. And so through our plan and the different phases, we would have opportunities there with our most restricted plan, most limited plan, I'll call it, that really I think meets the health and safety concerns and yet allows the opportunity. That's a cohort model of half the student body being in the building at any given time and asynchronous learning happening as people shift and adjust to this new way of schooling. And then maybe as we process through and we start to develop more capacity for both our students and our teachers in this virtual setting, we can start to move toward some at, at school while some synchronously log in at the same time. And then as the health situation improves, we'd have an opportunity where we could bring in all students through an A/B day block because we still have reduced passing periods. So we wouldn't have to be thinking of eight or nine times, we're going to have thousands of kids together in a hall, but maybe still limiting that to three or four times of a day. So just different ways that we're trying to look to phase in, how can we pivot as information changes?
I had one final question. Is there any time built in to the schedule, once we start school, to get everybody on board with the, you know, online plans and with the devices and kind of sit on course, whether they're going to be in person or online, just in case everyone were to go online later? Do we have time built in at the beginning of the school year? And even is there a way, two weeks before school starts, to open up that process? So families who are ready to go, you know, can at least get some kind of view of what's going to happen. So then there's fewer who need to be brought up to speed when the actual school year starts. Do we have anything built in like that?
Yeah, that's a fantastic question. Thank you for asking. One of the things we heard was that at the beginning of the school year, there's some things from the state we need to accomplish, which is assessing where our students are and what learning may or may not have happened in the last six months. So we're going to do that in the first two weeks. There's also a huge social emotional component that we know is, is going to be critical for our students who have not been connected to their school. There's also a parent and a student training if they're going to be going virtual. We've heard from a lot of our students in the spring and families as well in these empathy calls and interviews that we needed a lot more parent training on how to support their students while online learning. And so those that are choosing that virtual option, like I said, are going to give them some guidance on what it means to be a virtual learner, but also some training for the parents as well as the students on how to use their devices effectively to be online learner. So the first two weeks of school won't be our typical first two weeks of school. There'll definitely be a lot more training and supporting the, the, the next 34 weeks as we, as we move forward.
From a staff preparation point of view, we did re-hall our June professional learning, anticipating we would need more support for our staff, either teaching in a blended model or teaching online learning. And the same goes for what we call workshop week, which is the week before school starts. Remaining focused on the immediate needs. Our strategic plan is still there. Our major goals are still there. But we also realized that we have to help our staff feel safe and secure and equipped to move forward. And we, that is a, that is a major priority. So we have kind of wiped a clean slate of what we thought we were going to do six months ago for professional learning and still keeping the anchors of our work, but making sure that we're prioritizing the immediate needs for that workshop week.
I would like to thank everyone and this plan will be ever-evolving. And to remind board members, if you have additional questions, please feel free to contact the administration. These were great questions that were asked and I'm sure we will have more and as things change. And I even look at two weeks ago, I mean, putting this together, how things have changed so drastically. And I can appreciate that you guys are staying on top of this. So I want to thank you all and also the board for the questions. And please, if you have additional ones, feel free to, you could email them to Laurel or to the superintendent and deputy superintendent. Because I know what we are looking for is we want what is best for our students, for our teachers, for our community. And it's, right now it's a moving target for us. So I, I thank you for your hard work and keep moving forward.
President Humblets, President Humblets, we've been here for, for about two and a half hours. Could we, or two hours, could we take a two-minute break?
Two minutes, yes. We'll take a two-minute break and then we'll be back. Thanks. Okay, is that enough, enough time for everyone? Next, we'll move to the board governance. And I know every year we submit our legislative priorities. So I'm going to ask Gary and Director Anholt and Director Garlock, if you could share with us the top four priorities? Because we know many schools will be sending in their priorities. So could you identify the top four for us, please?
Yes, President Humblets, I'd be glad to do that for you. So after receiving input from nearly everyone on the board, the top four priorities are, the first one is mental health, which was number seven in the legislative resolutions. Supporting efforts to establish comprehensive community mental health systems to offer preventative and treatment services and comprehensive school mental health programs. Obviously, I think we all know mental health is always important, but especially in light of the situation with COVID. Threats on our kids are, are pretty, pretty significant. The second one is number 15, which deals with teacher recruitment and licensure. Supporting additional tools to attract individuals to the teaching profession, especially for teacher shortage areas. There are bullets under that, but you all have access to the full resolutions. You can look at those if you so, if you are so inclined. The third one is number 18, school funding policy. This has to do with school foundation formulas that provide sufficient funding for all of the various components of public schools. And then the fourth one is number 19, supplemental state aid. That, that rate, which the legislature sets every year, be sufficient to support the education that we need to do. It also establishes some timelines for the supplemental state aid. So those are the four. And Gary, do you have any additional comments?
Thanks, Cindy. I think I'm on. Yes, I'm on mute. I, I think we've seen even in the last few weeks, how, what a fluid situation that schools are in. And I, I believe we'll, we'll send in these, these resolutions, but I still think there could be additions or, or more emphasis on some areas as we go into this, the fall convention. We could, we could voice still our priority. That will be the, the final step with the, with the legislative process as far as sending those on to our lobbyists. But the other is that I think that the UEN can have much more flexibility in their ability to. in their ability to, to set lobbyists direction and so on. With the smaller number of schools and so on, much easier to have some flexibility and have input to that. So I think that's another area that we can, can put input to on the, on the legislative part. So thanks to all the board members for their participation and, and helping with this. And we can now forward this on.
So I'll complete that survey tomorrow morning and it'll be number seven, 15, 18 and 19 is what I'm hearing correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, since we've identified the four, so Director Garlock and Director Anholt. Thank you. Will need a voice vote. Can call for a vote, all in favor of the top four as identified, please say aye. Those opposed, same sign? Thank you. And thank you both for your work. The final agenda item are the appointment of an oath of our office for our Board Secretary and Board Treasurer. Do we have a motion for the appointment of our Board Secretary?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did someone, was that?
Yes.
Director Timinski?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. This is a roll call.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Merschrock.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Timinski.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. Now, what I'm getting ready, since Laura and I are in the same room, but I'm getting ready to do the oath. Do you, Laurel, Aday solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Secretary of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the county of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? If so, please respond by saying, I do.
I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do, now we'll move on. Do we have a motion to appoint our Board Treasurer? Is there a motion to appoint our Board Treasurer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call.
Was that Director Newman on second on that?
Was that you, Director Newman?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Director Timinski.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Merschrock.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. I can't, oh, I can see you, Dave. You have to put up your right hand. Thank you. Do you, Dave Nicholson, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of the Secretary of, nope, that's Treasurer, sorry, of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the county of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now, as now or hereafter required by the law? If so, please respond by saying, I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With no further business, we stand adjourned. And thank you all for your participation tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone.